Can I welcome everybody for attending the first in many meetings in this new committee system, this is the Strategy and Resources meeting. Can I first of all introduce myself, I'm councillor Terry Fox, I'm the leader of the council, councillor for Manor Castle-Wood and chair of this committee. The meeting today is open to the public and we have received four questions from a member of the public. There is no fire test planned for today and if there is an emergency evacuation, please take instructions from the town hall staff. The assembly point for us today is Tudor Square. Can we in turn go round members of the Strategy and Resources and get them to introduce themselves? I'll ask you by name if that's okay. Richard?
Thank you Chair, my name is Richard Williams, I'm a Stanington Ward member and I'm chair of the Communities Park and Letter Committee.
Thank you Richard and welcome Martin.
Thank you Chair, Martin Smith, I'm chair of the Economic Development and Skills Committee and also ward councillor for Doran Topley.
Cheers Martin, welcome. Angela?
Thank you Chair, councillor Angela Arden for Bromhill and Charlestown and I am co-chair of the Adult Health and Social Care.
Cheers Angela, thank you. Douglas?
Thanks here Douglas Johnson City Ward and Chair of the Housing Policy Committee.
Cheers Douglas and welcome. Joe?
Hi, I'm Joe Orson councillor for Doran Topley and Chair of Waste and Streeting.
Here's Joe. Brian?
Yeah councillor Brian Lodge, co-chair of the Finance Subcommittee and member for Burley Ward.
Cheers Brian. Mick?
Good afternoon everyone, I'm councillor Mick Rooney, I'm councillor for Woodhouse Ward and co-chair of the Education Children and Families Policy Committee, I think. It's a much shorter version than the last one I had.
Thanks Mick and welcome. Julie?
Good afternoon Chair, I'm Julie Grokut, the Deputy Leader of the Council, ward member for Stockbridge and Piddon and co-chair of the Transport Regeneration and Climate Policy Committee.
Thank you and welcome, I'll just go round the offices and get the other officers to drew some souls as when we get to the reports. Ryan?
Thanks Chair, my name's Ryan Keyworth, I'm the council's director of Finance and Commercial Services.
Thank you Ryan. Julian?
Thank you Chair, Julie End up with Director of Legal and Governance.
Eugene?
Eugene Walker Acting Chief Executive.
Abby?
Abby Brans, Abby Brans or Committee Secretary.
Thank you Abby. Finally James?
Thank you Chair, James Henderson Director of Policy Performance and Communications.
Thank you everyone, we'll start today's meeting with item two, apologies for absence, Abby?
We've had no apologies today, thank you.
Thank you, have we got any exclusion of the public and press?
Not today Chair.
Thank you, is there any member got any declarations of interest on today's agenda? None recorded, thank you. Okay, item five, the questions did come in slightly late but as this is a no kick-off and I'm sure Nigel would have got them in on time anyway if noted, we've received four questions from Nigel, Nigel want to ask questions please?
Thank you Chair, yes with you moving to a Tuesday from a Wednesday, I didn't put my questions in till Sunday night which is my norm, I will try and get them in on Fridays in future, assuming you're sticking to Tuesdays, who knows, welcome to the New World Order. Question one, with a dire prediction for the potential budget crisis for the city's finances, I'd like to ask for some clarification of the report details. We must all recognise the problem of the national and international economic crisis that will impact local authorities as well as households and businesses in the coming months, but specifically, do the forecasts in this report include the impact of fuel and energy costs on Sheffield City Council budgets? Do the forecasts include the impact of poor service from SCC contracts on financial position? Are there plans to address these problems of performance? Couple of examples, I'm still trying to sort out a council tax exemption from a house I sold over 12 months ago, so that's £2,500 missing from the Treasury for a start, and business rates income from premises sold four years ago that are still unoccupied and therefore presumably currently exempt. Are there plans to approach government for a relief package proportionate to the cost pressures similar to that being offered to households? And are there plans to approach the new mayor about the issues and to get his support in squeezing more money out of government and to address how his allegedly more flexible approach can be used to support both local businesses and therefore Sheffield City Council? In other words, support to business can pay business rates rather than avoid them. And lastly, does the report enable Sheffield City Council to extract and discuss the impact of Covid and Brexit measures on the city's finances? Question two, both a finance and democracy question next, what is the saving that would be made for Sheffield City Council by switching to all-out elections rather than elections by thirds? We've already heard as part of the governance committee's work that all-out elections are a better fit for committee decision-making than the current election cycle. It would provide for stability of memberships for four years, improved decision-making through better experienced councillors and enable longer-term policy planning than currently. It would take councillors away from the continual fixation on electioneering that typifies the current cycle with all the antagonism that generates between the parties. The only loss would be for the political parties in having to be grown-ups for four years, I suspect this is a price the residents would be willing to pay. Will this committee add a review of the Sheffield City Council election cycle to their work plan as a matter of urgency, potentially to be sent to the governance committee for consideration and research about fitness for the new committee system? Question three, and this is a bit of an annual question, as part of my daily exercise I often spend time in and around the General Cemetery. My route always takes me past the Mount Pleasant House and inevitably I'm reminded that it is now four years since the property was agreed to be sold by Sheffield City Council for redevelopment into care home facilities. In that time, nothing appears to have happened at all to that building, apart from continued dilapidation of a Grade Two heritage asset and undoubtedly a consequent impact on business rates for the council. I was told by a now departed councillor that the sale went through in 2021 but I was sceptical. Therefore, who currently owns Mount Pleasant House? What planning permission still exists if any was ever granted and what is Sheffield City Council doing to ensure the integrity of this Grade Two listed building? And finally, question four, the seven principles of public life are embedded in the Sheffield City Council constitution, appendix A of the constitution, part five, page 244. Will this committee confirm that they hold these principles to be a core part of the way Sheffield City Council works despite the pressures from local business leaders and some councillors to water these down for one specific individual? Thank you Chair.
Thanks Nigel and I'll try and answer them as much as I can, if I don't get the full because of the time limit then I know you will but writing them will make sure we get a full answer for you. So on question one, point one if you want, yes we have factored into our forecast our view of pressures for the energy costs and any mitigation such as reserves for the such eventualities. Your next point, due to the forecasts include impact to poor service, contract management is important and Sheffield City Council takes their role seriously for any supplier we have contracts with, we will look into the specifics of your issue and if you would like to share the full details then we'll take that forward. On your next point about are there any plans to approach government for a relief package, it's unknown at this stage if local authorities will receive any government support in year for such pressure. We're not assuming any further funding in the forecast as it would not be prudent to do so, we are working with the relevant Sheffield City Council committees to manage within current resources, we continue to lobby government for the fair funding for the council and inflationary increases will be an element of our approach throughout. Within our flexibility with our new mayor, we will, as you know, we work very closely with the South Yorkshire MCA on a number of issues that affect the council and our region, working across the region to ensure a collaborative approach and to maximise the opportunities. And we have our first meeting next Monday with the new mayor, the MCA. Lastly on this point, there are many factors impacting on the council's finances, the report today does not attempt to identify them individually but focus on how the authority should address them and the overall impact. And I'm sure as we go through the committee system, each committee will be working within their own budgets, but the finance subcommittee will be going into more detail and if you need any more I would suggest people raise issues with that committee. Secondly, first of all, apologise for the noise around, I've got bumping above but we are doing work on the building at the moment and outside it seems to be some sort of Greek dancing I think, smashing the place, so sorry about that Nigel. On your next question, one point two, question two, in common with most metropolitan districts Sheffield currently elects a third of its councillors in three out of every four years with the fourth year being a fallow year. All authorities that elect by thirds have the option to alter their pattern or elections and to move to all-out elections. This would mean all councillors being elected at the same time once every four years as you express. There are benefits and disadvantages to any pattern of election, for example, electing in thirds gives voters a more frequent opportunity to express their views as they have done over the last few years. And also obviously with the financial situation, that shouldn't be the driver, it should be democracy that is the driver. And I'm sure during this term within this, I am sure that those conversations will come up whether it's in the SR committee, which is what I'd expect it to be. On question three on your daily exercise, I know I've been part of it so I will try and be as clear as I possibly can for where we are with Mount Pleasant House and I have worked with the community group Shipshape as well, that's obviously concerned about it. So the hub and the stables are now honed by Herms Care under a long lease from the council. Contracts for the agreements of the lease for the main house were exchanged in July 2021, which contractually commits the purchaser to acquiring a lease for this part of the site. The terms of that contract require a number of conditions to be satisfied by the purchaser to ensure that the inherited asset is repaired and the scheme delivered as original intended. Once these conditions are satisfied, the lease will complete and the ownership will transfer to the purchaser, Herms Care, under the terms of the contract. Planning permission, an application for planning permission has not yet been submitted, discussions are currently underway and this is one of the conditions to be satisfied for the completion of the lease for the house. As regarding to ensure the integrity of the Grade Two listed building, there are conditions in the agreement for the lease relating to planning and repair of the building. The agreement for lease requires that the main building is refurbished and brought into use before or at the same time as any new building's extension works. SCC as the landlord and planning authority will sign off any proposals before they are undertaken to ensure that these are sympathetic to the listed building and secure its long-term future. Question four, all I can say to you on this Nigel is myself and the deputy leader did our training yesterday for moving to committees and in one of that with the Centre for Governance and Scrutiny, there is in there that we sign up to the Nolan principles. Thank you, thanks everybody. Thank you. On the, moving to the next item and thanks Nigel for those questions, the next item on the agenda is the item six which is the retirement of staff. Can we note those recommendations, some long periods of service in there and that they get the scroll and extend to them the best wishes on their future and a long and happy retirement? Can we agree that? Agreed, thank you. Item seven is the work programme. Abby or is it Jill or Abby? Jill?
Thank you Chair, this is a regular item that you're going to see on here, this initial report just sets out the purpose of it and gives you the, it gives you what, so suggestions if you will, as to what the work programme may contain, but that is something for you as a committee to determine going forward. You'll find it appendix one, there's a menu of options there that you could choose for further learning and development for the committee. Appendix two gives you the public engagement and the participation tool for you to consider when you are looking at the work programme to determine how you want to engage the public in the piece of work that the committee will be working on. And then appendix three is the actual work programme that you can, you know, you need to sign off as part of the process of this committee on a, on the regular basis. So every time you meet, you will get an updated work programme that we will have already discussed with you as officers prior to the meeting and then if the committee's comfortable with the programme and what will, what's coming forward in the following meeting, it gives some visibility to the public as to what the committee's priorities are and how you will be dealing with matters over the course of the year. Thank you Chair.
Thanks Julian, as we can see this is going to be a live and breathing document that's going to change quite rapidly on a number of times and obviously we can pick it up at our pre-agenda meeting as well as members. So there are a number of recommendations, is there any questions or comments on this?
Mick? Yeah, it's just one question on, I suppose, a relatively minor item and it's the bi-monthly disposal list. At this, well, prior to the change over to this new system, we would get notified as local members that perhaps something in our ward was going to be sold or whatever. So this, this bi-monthly disposal list that we will see is that for us to decide whether the items are disposed of or is it prior to consultation with local members or is it after consultation with local members? Because at this moment in time, we do have the opportunity to pass an opinion on whatever's being proposed. Thank you.
Thanks Mick. Julian or Ryan?
And I don't have the detail on that but I can go away and find out, Ryan do you?
So I'd expect that to be after consultation with members.
May I have that clarified because, you know, I'd expect, a bit nervous about that.
Sorry if I can, when I say expect, it's after consultation with local members. What this committee does is take the place of a previous decision that would have been taken by an individual cabinet member in most cases, which would have been post-consultation. So that's what this committee's stepping into. The discussion that I've been having with the finance subcommittee on their first pre-meeting was whether some of these property decisions are actually taken by the finance subcommittee meeting rather than using this Strategy and Resources committee, but so that's a potential change for the future, but consultation with local members is very much still part of the process.
Thanks Ryan. Brian then Angela?
Yeah, it was just to say it's the formal process after we've gone through everything else and as Ryan's explained, it's where it used to be in the individual cabinet member. So I don't think it's going to be anything as a surprise but we'll need to make sure and, you know, we'll talk about it in the finance subcommittee and make sure that notification goes out in plenty of time.
Thanks Brian. Angela?
Is there also a formal process for notifying members because this is my, you know, coming into my fourth year as councillor and I don't think I've ever been notified of anything being disposed in my ward. Now, does that mean it's never happened or does it mean that I've not been told? So could we also look at whether there is a process for members to be involved or notified or whatever? Because, you know, it might genuinely not have happened in my ward in the last three years but I've never been notified that any assets have been disposed in Bromhill and Charlestown, thank you.
Thanks Ryan, there is a process, I could only assume that nothing's been disposed of in your, Brian?
Yeah, there is a formal process and it goes out to all councillors, any disposals that are coming up that go out there and so anybody can comment, it comes right through before they then go on to the formal process taking through. But there is a list that goes out, we'll just chase and make sure that it's going out everywhere.
Okay, thanks for that. With that in mind then and the recommendations that this is going to change on a, on a regular basis but we are going to be able to see this in our pre-agenda as well, can we agree those recommendations? Oh, sorry Douglas?
Sorry just, I don't know if we're flagging up other things that should be on there, I mean, I just wanted to flag up the issue about the climate change monitoring that isn't anywhere on this plan at the moment but I was sort of glad just to put a pitch in that the work of the ten-point plan which spans right across quite a number of committees needs to be on here at some point and it will also come into the Change Regeneration Transport Committee but because it covers a much wider area than that, it'd be good to have a corporate-wide approach to looking at that given that it was agreed to the corporate priority last year.
Thanks Douglas. Julie?
Thank you Chair, yeah, we had our pre-meeting for the Transport Regen and Climate this morning and it was something that, you know, we did pick up and it does get mentioned somewhere, I can't remember now but there is, it does get covered off certainly in the paper, Agenda item 11, it gets mentioned somewhere in relation to the, go on, the local, the local plan and where we are with that but I think you're right, we need to make sure and certainly we were keen this morning in our pre-meeting that we make sure that we have cover across. And actually that was some of the questions I wanted to ask about in practical terms, how is that going to work? Because I think it's really important that we do all understand, you know, how that is a thread going across and how it works and who is responsible for what and I think they're just some of the teasing things that we're going to need to get our heads around as we start doing the work.
Thanks Julian, thanks Douglas. Douglas?
Just to come back in briefly, I mean, I think that approach is right, it does need to be in there, I'm just thinking about, you know, it will come into say, you know, the waste area, but also into social services of both adults and children, so we need to bring those in as well as the committee that I chair. Hence the need for it to be overarching and therefore somewhere on the work plan of this committee.
Absolutely and we'll probably kind of go into detail in the pre-agenda meeting and get make sure that that's covered off. Thanks Douglas. With those amendments etc regarding that, we'll pick them up in our next, can we agree? Well, thank you. The next item is item eight, how is Sheffield the year ahead? Is that you Eugene? James? Okay, on to you James.
Thank you very much Chair, so the paper that we've got on item eight is, it's a paper in two parts. Firstly, to provide an overview of the key financial policy and operating issues, challenges and opportunities facing the council for the next 12 months. And then secondly, the paper also sets out a proposed approach to developing a new corporate plan for the authority which is suggested should be a key part of this committee's work over the next few months and a proposal as to how we might take that forward. If I can start though with the operating context, we felt that it was important to bring a report forward to the first meeting of this committee following the election to set out the key issues facing the council over the, over the next 12 months. Two of the issues that are highlighted in this report are covered in more detail in other reports on, on the agenda, the first of those being the council's financial position which is covered under item nine, so I won't steal too much of Ryan's thunder with that but needless to say, the council is facing a very challenging financial, financial position at the moment, both in year and in 2023/24 and our ability to set a balanced budget for that, for that next financial year will be determined by the success that we have in implementing the agreed budget savings that we've agreed for this year. But Ryan will go into some more detail about that and a proposed approach to managing the budget position in the, in the later report. The second item which is also on the agenda for more detailed conversation later on is the cost of living crisis, so I won't say too much about that at the moment. We then have the levelling up agenda which sort of perhaps in contrast to the, to the previous two items is more of an opportunity for the, for the city, a significant opportunity for the city. We've got two levelling up fund bids that have been approved and which we will need to work to deliver over the next, next year. And we've also, as members will be aware, been identified as a pilot place for the levelling up accelerator programme with government, so there is a significant opportunity for Sheffield to take advantage of potentially during the year ahead and there is work that is underway on that already. Aligned to that, there is a significant piece of work that's been taken forward under the auspices of the City Partnership Board to develop a new city strategy and also working with the Mayoral Combined Authority to develop a place-based plan to set out our investment priorities for the city. So a series of linked pieces of work and opportunities that the council will be able to and should be able to take advantage of during the next 12 months. There is also work that the council can build on in the, in the next year following the successful implementation of the local area committees and the work of the governance committee in preparation for the new committee system to further develop our approach to devolution and to, and to community engagement and we are continuing to work, as members will be aware, with Involve which is a public participation charity to support and advise us on how we might take forward and make a step change in the way in which we involve communities and, and the public in the council's decision-making over the, over the next few months. And alongside that, there is also an opportunity to reconsider our relationship with voluntary community and faith sector in the, in the city and that's highlighted in the report. We also know that there are some significant service delivery challenges facing the council at the moment and we are taking steps to ensure that we've got robust performance management and assurance capabilities in place and doubtless this committee will want to take an overview of the, of the overall performance of, of service delivery at, at these meetings and to in particular identify and address any critical areas of underperformance. Much of that will be done in the individual policy committees but the Strategy and Resources Committee will want to maintain that whole organisation overview of how we are ensuring that all of our services are delivering effectively for the people of Sheffield. We've also highlighted an asset management maintenance backlog that is a significant issue for the council, we have a backlog maintenance of around £120 million across our estate at the moment, there is an asset management plan that has been agreed to help us reduce that backlog and to, and to bring our estate up to the standard that it, that it needs to be and to, to deliver significant impact on the effectiveness of that state but also on other issues such as carbon emissions arising from that. That area of work will fall within the remit of this committee and is doubtless something that you will want to keep a, a close eye on over the, over the next year. A few, few areas within the health and social care arena, we've got significant changes that... that are taking place nationally around NHS governance and the move away from the Clinical Commission Group model of commissioning to an integrated care system. That has some significant potential impacts for the local authority, and one of the things we will need to consider is how we interface effectively with those new arrangements. Linked to that really is the fact that we know that both adults and children's social care are areas of both significant risk for the authority. That has been the case for some considerable amount of time. They're under significant financial pressure and are facing rising costs and lack of capacity in both of those systems, which has a potential impact of significant financial stress and a risk of poorer outcomes for individuals. There are plans in place in both of those areas to mitigate those potential risks, but that again is an area that we, that it's important that members are aware of, and particularly the fact that adult social care, there is a distinct possibility that that service may be inspected by the Care Quality Commission over the course of the coming year. A few more issues just to place on the agenda. Progress on the local plan, which again is on the update, is on the agenda for today. councillor Johnson has already mentioned the further action that will be needed around climate change, following the agreement of the 10-point plan, and helping meet our response to the climate crisis and also the biodiversity crisis that the council has declared. The Clean Air Zone is also due to be implemented during 2023, and that follows a number of delays, and there are some risks associated with that as well, not least of which the fact that our air quality is insufficient at the at the moment and is not meeting the legal standards. And then the final issue that I just want to draw to the committee's attention at this point is the forthcoming publication of the Race Equality Commission Report. And members will recall that the Race Equality Commission has been working over the last year and a bit, and is now at the point where it is ready to bring back its report. The council's response to the recommendations that the Race Equality Commission makes will be important. Those recommendations will be made not only to the council but to other institutions in the city, but certainly the council has a significant leadership role to play around that. And so that's another important issue that we will need to make sure we pick up and respond to during this year. So that's a run-through of some of the key issues that we've identified. There may be others, and we will bring those forward to members as and when they emerge during the year. The committee's asked to note those emerging issues and either to delegate the responsibility for those to specific policy committees or indeed to take those on itself and receive further reports on those during the course of the year. The second part of the report then is concerned with the development of a new corporate plan for the authority that's set out from paragraph 20 onwards. We've had the one-year plan in place over the last year that has provided some clear direction and priority for the organisation during that period. Obviously, that is due to run out, the clue is somewhat in the name there. And it therefore falls on us to think about how we develop a longer-term set of priorities that can help to provide certainty and direction for the authority over a longer-term period, which will in turn help us to prioritise our resources, help us to think about how we work with our partners and be open and clear with our staff about what our expectations are. And also, it will help members to hold us as officers to account for the delivery of the commitments that are made within that corporate plan. So this process and this piece of work are quite important in terms of helping us prioritise and helping us ensure that we are focusing on the right things for the authority, but will also be helpful in terms of ensuring that we're able to meet the budget challenge that we described earlier. Work has already begun on that. We have begun quite a significant piece of work, talking to staff across the organisation about what they would like to see from the corporate plan that's set out at paragraph 24 of the report. What we're suggesting though is that we need to do some work over the summer with members on a themed basis to understand some, to understand members' key priorities for for the corporate plan and to work with members to develop those with a view to bringing back a draft in the early part of the autumn to this committee for consideration. That will mean doing some work sort of offline, as it were, and then the once discussed at this committee, that would then go forward to full council, because the corporate plan will also need to form a core part of the council's budget and policy framework. What we're also suggesting as part of this report is that because it is going to take some months to get that in place, in order to provide some shorter-term certainty for the organisation, that it might be helpful to develop a high-level set of key priorities or objectives for the authority that might be agreed at a meeting of the Strategy and Resources Urgency Committee in July. But that's a question for the committee this afternoon as to whether that would be beneficial and a helpful step towards a corporate plan that would provide some shorter-term certainty. Chair, I'll stop there. Appreciate there's quite a lot in that report.
Thanks, James, and thanks for that comprehensive report, thanks. Questions, comments? I've got Julie. Quite a few, sorry. Julie, and then I'll take, just keep your hands up, sorry.
Thank you, Chair. Thanks, James. I think one thing that is for sure is we're definitely in for a very busy and interesting and quite exciting year. Apologies when I spoke earlier, for some reason I thought it was in the the local plan that I'd read it, but it's actually your report, James, at 17.3, where it says it will be important for each policy committee to consider and take action to respond to the climate crisis and within and across their individual areas of responsibility. So I suppose, you know, we've got it captured there. I suppose for me it's about making sure that it is on everyone else's forward plans so that they know that they're doing it, and understanding how we all work together so that this all comes together. So I think we may need some sort of plan or understanding across all of the policy committees so that we all know how we're doing the work. And then of course, that goes back to Douglas's point about whether that then should be something that sits with us as opposed to sitting with the policy committee that I co-chair, just to make sure that we absolutely get that right and get that nailed down properly. A few other points for me, you know, it's important as we work in this new committee system that we make timely decisions. I am very worried that having a corporate plan by October is timely. I don't think that it is when you're talking about we have a one-year cycle. So I think we need to look at that. I quite like the idea of the high-level steps and doing something there, because I don't think that really, with so much work going on, with all members being involved, with the additional work that this brings to offices and the new ways of working, the corporate plan is really a key piece of work in terms of keeping us all focused. And I think waiting until October for that is just way too long. So I think we do need something there in the interim that can assist us along the way with that, however we do that. The other thing on 12.2, when we start talking about performance management, I think it's absolutely right and proper that we have some sort of performance management, that the people of Sheffield can understand how we are performing, what they can expect from us as a council in terms of responding to their issues and needs. However, I would like some more information about how that is going to work, please, because if it's just going to be a tick box exercise and if, you know, for example, the housing committee are just going to go around ticking boxes because they've done X number of repairs and that's what we're expecting them to do, it's not for me just about quantity, it's about quality of service that we offer as well. So I would be interested in receiving more information about how we are capturing the quality of service that we offer as a council as we move forward, and how that hopefully fits into the performance management framework, please. Thank you.
Thanks, Julie. I've got most members wanting to speak, so I'll bring Martin in as well, and then I'll bring us any twos if that's okay, and then give James a chance to answer that. Martin?
Yeah, thank you, Chair. Thanks for the report, James. It's in regard to Section 13. A maintenance backlog of £120 million is a fairly eye-wateringly large number, as I'm sure you'll appreciate. Is there any information, please, on the split of that? I know housing repairs were an issue for us as a council last year, so don't expect you to have those numbers in your head, but if you could circulate a breakdown of those, please, and at the same time give us an indication of when we're likely to get sight of the potential action plan as to how we can reduce that very large figure. Thank you.
Thanks, Martin. James, you want to take those two?
Yeah, thanks, Chair. So just on councillor Grokut's points, on the corporate plan, I just wanted to provide some, I should have mentioned this, but the intention is that we move away from having a one-year plan to having something that's got a longer-term horizon, so over perhaps three to five years, to give us some clearer certainty and that will allow us to have an outcomes-led approach to developing and setting our budget. But yes, I absolutely understand the concern about not having a plan in place until October. That's probably, if not quite inevitable, the way in which the committee meetings work means that it's it's difficult to bring a full plan forward in advance of that, which is why we've suggested having something that is a higher-level statement of priorities ahead of that. So that's the rationale for that. On performance management, we've got that on the Forward Work Programme for this committee. So we'd be keen to bring back a report that sets out how the performance management approach for the authority works, and absolutely we will want to take into account within that both qualitative and quantitative measures, so understanding the outcomes that are being achieved, as well as the more traditional service management type approaches. So we can pick those up. On councillor Smith's question about the maintenance backlog, I don't have those figures at hand, but we can get those. I don't know whether either Eugene or Ryan wants to comment on that. Eugene?
Yeah, I think it'd be a good opportunity to get this later, and obviously it will it will need to form part of the discussion for this committee and the finance committee. The backlog maintenance has been there for a number of years, it's been growing. It's across all our services, from schools, housing, but also a lot of the basic infrastructure we've got, this building, the Graves building. So there's a number of kind of key asset issues I think will need to don't need to be part of the agenda of this committee. And what's always been the case, and it'll be good to be able to kind of discuss this cross-party in the committee, is some of that is going to have to involve some rationalisation of assets, the action plan. There isn't enough money and there never will be enough money, particularly because the government gives very small capital grants these days, and it tends to be only for new assets or things like that. And we're going to have to look at the opportunities we've got to access funding, but also to think about what we need to do about rationalisation. Because the number's too big to go with, there were any plan of actual maintenance spending in the context of the budget we've got. So that will be part of the agenda of this committee. Thanks.
Thanks, James and Eugene. Next two, I've got Angela and Mick. Angela?
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, my questions are to do with Items 12 and 13 together, and then I've got something on 28. So in terms of, thank you for the report, it's really comprehensive, and I think it's good to have like something that is very kind of detailed. In terms of the changes needed to improve our services as well as the backlog of the repairs, we've known for a while that we've had problems with these, you know, departments, if you want, of the council. I think it would, I would really like to see something that really spells out that we want to change the culture of the council in terms of how we relate to our residents, and that we want to make our services accessible to all, regardless of their assets in terms of being able to contact us. So it doesn't matter if someone needs to contact us by phone, if they've got internet, or if they if they have to come in person, we make our front door open to everybody. Because at the moment, that is not happening, and we need to ensure that it doesn't matter if it's, you know, 87-year-old Margaret in whatever part of the of the city who is contacting us, or a refugee that has a pay-as-you-go phone and cannot afford to be on the phone for 57 minutes, that they are able to contact us and to get the services that they are entitled to. And the other thing is about the, and I think it is linked, and it is linked to the culture. So in terms of the repairs, I know that there's been lots of teething problems with the new system and but I think it's also about changing the culture of our employees and how people should be really proud to work for the repair service in a Sheffield City Council, and that's not happening at the moment because people must be really frustrated because they get the wrath of people who've been waiting for months to get their repair done. But if people were proud of working for us because they're doing a good job and people are happy with the job they're doing, then you get better work from our employees. So I think it is linked about how we present ourselves as an employer and as a council that is open and, you know, accessible to everybody. And you don't have to, you know, to get lost in our website because you can't find something that you know is there. And if you don't know is there, it's virtually impossible to find anything. You know, or you're waiting on the phone for ages. So I think they are linked, and they're linked to the culture. So I think I would like us to spell it out, because us councillors get the worst-case scenario, you know, where people have really struggled, and we have to justify or, you know, an organisation that we represent that is actually in some cases giving a very, very poor service, and it's a really hard thing to do. So, you know, I want to, I am proud of representing Sheffield, but I want to be proud because we're doing such a fantastic job all the time. And that is like, the exception is getting something wrong. At the moment, it's not the exception. We've got backlog and lots of people are waiting way too long on the phone, and some people can't afford to pay, you know, on a mobile phone that is very expensive, if it's pay-as-you-go. And in terms of, I'm really glad to see the members' workshops. I think it's a really good idea. I'll just have a couple of queries. One, for some of them, that you've got adult social care and education and children put together, which I understand why they need to be together, but I'm wondering, is one workshop enough for such huge portfolios? It's the same with transport, regeneration and climate, it's massive. So, and also, could we have the dates as soon as possible? Because obviously, in the summer, those councillors, not me, my children are older, but those councillors who have children that will be off on holiday, they will need to either, you know, plan for childcare or whatever. And we want as many members as possible to be able to attend. So I know we've rushed and, you know, you're all doing a fantastic job trying to catch up on the lull between election and getting started, but dates in diaries are very important, especially for those who have caring responsibilities or jobs. Thank you.
Thanks, Angela. James, I'll bring you in a minute. I've got Mick.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you, James, for the report. One of the reasons we're changing from the Cabinet system to this committee system is to have greater member involvement, which is great, but I think on top of that, there needs to be a programme of bringing members up to date. We've had a significant number of new members join the council this year and last year and one of the issues with the Cabinet system is the perhaps lack of knowledge of some of members of the council about what is going off outside, shall we say, of the council structures. Because in this report, you've mentioned a number of positive initiatives there around the government's levelling up. There's an old debate that we have had about what that really means and et cetera and whether Michael Gove actually needs some hospital treatment. But the issue for me is if we're going to have real member involvement, then we need to have the knowledge to make that involvement real. And at the moment, I think, for example, on the Levelling Up Fund and the work of the Combined Mayoral Authority, some of us don't entirely understand how that works and we don't entirely understand what the future holds. So what I'm asking is, we've got a significant amount of training going off at the moment. It's largely to do with changing the two systems, but I think we could do with a bit of education about what's going off externally to the council and bringing us up to speed with the positive side of the agenda. Thank you.
Thanks, Mick. James?
Thanks, Chair. I can start with councillor, words like councillor Argentia's questions. So I think your first one was around the improvement in services and around culture change within the organisation. I think we would absolutely agree that we need to ensure that our workforce is supported and enabled to do the best job that they possibly can and that's something that we've been doing a lot of work on actually in recent months. We've recently launched a new set of values for the organisation that talk very much about putting people, putting the people of Sheffield at the heart of what we do. So there's work going on to make sure that's rolled out and that's embedded across all of our services. However, that needs to be put alongside some of the improvements in process and other things that are potentially holding us back at the moment. And I know that there is a significant amount of work going on, both with repairs and maintenance and the service themselves, and there's a new director there who started, I think, last week, who will be picking this up, but also in customer services as well. You mentioned some of the issues at the moment with the contact centre and with the website and there's work going on on both of those at the moment. So there's a rapid plan being put into, being developed to improve performance in the contact centre because we know that that is not good enough at the moment and that people are having to wait far too long to get through on the phone to us. But also with websites, so there will be a new website going live, I believe by the end of June, which will, I think, take us a long way further forward in terms of our online offer, which at the moment is not sufficient and not able to meet people's needs. So I think bringing those things together, the improvements in services and the culture change that we've talked about, will hopefully help to move us on at a rapid pace and we need to do that. The second question, I think, was around the member workshops. Yes, we'll get the dates out to you as soon as we possibly can. We'll also have a look and see whether there's a possibility of putting more workshops on, for example, so that we can explore some of these issues in a bit greater depth because I do take the point that there's going to be an awful lot to cover in those. What we do want to do though is to make sure that we're sort of focusing on the outcomes that we want to achieve rather than specifically around the committee remit. So that was the sort of logic in bringing those together in those groupings. So just going on to councillor Rooney's question, I think that's something that we should look at. So I think that officers would be very happy to put on some, Jill may want to come in on this, would be very happy to put on workshops and training to bring members up to speed on those topics. But Jill?
Thank you. Yes, just to update members as to where we got to with regard to member development. The Governance Committee recognised the importance of member development, particularly within the new system. So one of the things that we've done in putting together our revised structure for supporting members is we've reintroduced a specific officer to deal with member development within democratic services and they are pulling together and have pulled together the training programmes that you're all taking part in. What we've also done is included within the terms of reference of the Governance Committee member development so that we can make sure we are responding to members' needs and members have a say in that in a formal process. So we can make sure that those types of things, as in, as you say, at the moment, everything that's been put through member development is about process because of the changes we've got, but actually, you know, learning the different topics and understanding the context can be developed, we can put a programme together to meet members' needs to add on to that.
Thanks, Jill. Mick, did you also want to come back on?
Just a brief comment, Chair. My concern about that is that what we've been undertaking recently in terms of training has been sort of take it or leave it, if you like. I don't mean that disrespectfully to anybody, but that's basically what's happened. And nobody's asked me what I would like in terms of any further training. I understand the need to educate people about how the new systems are going to work and the transition and all that sort of stuff, but I am concerned that the sort of thing that I've just mentioned will just get forgotten about. Because in the past, what's tended to happen is it's been about process. This is somewhat ironic, but it's also been largely around IT training as well and my colleagues will no doubt be smirking as they hear so much of those words, but I do think we do, we need to expand the knowledge base, the knowledge base of members so that, as I say, we can make this new system work with participating, educated, knowledgeable members.
Thanks, Mick. And the lead member for Governance Committee is sat here, so I'm sure he's ticking. That's as we speak. Thanks. I've got you, Brian. Do you just bring you in in a minute? Next, I've got Douglas and Joe.
Right, thanks. I've got a couple of points. First of all, going back to the climate change point, agree with Julie's point about the climate change issues and monitoring that should be on all the work plans, but again, that implies therefore you need to bring back to this committee just to supervise that. But just linked with that, as a bit of comment going up the reports, if you look at paragraph 35 of the report in relation to equality, it's and then 39, similar one on climate change. It's more an observation, I think, that it says that there's no direct implications for equality or climate change and I'm thinking, this is the corporate plan, there should be. I mean, it's something where, yeah, we've lagged as a council in both those areas, we've got things to do. It really needs to be in there in the corporate plan. So it's just some takeaway. A specific question, though, is, so James referred to the one-year plan, which we had last year and there's quite a lot of detail in that. I wanted to ask if there's been any work done by officers to do a line-by-line summary of whether we've met those objectives in the one-year plan or to what extent, or whether they haven't been met at all. I don't know if you can tell us if that piece of work has been done or is in progress and if the answer is no, could it be done? Because I think that would be very helpful for all of us to focus on what needs to go into the next plan for the next year or the next five years. And then my final point was about the interface with the public and we've talked about the contact centre and the website, but I mean, just reflecting of the work plan, a lot of the focus on the work plan seems to be around issues that are basically operational, internally-focused, but our interface with the public isn't really coming out through the work plan there and obviously it's a bit in the corporate plan, but it really needs to. And I think we just do need to face up to the fact that the public wants us to get it right together with, you know, the call centre, with the website and with the issue of housing repairs too, because it's been bugging us all, you know, in a completely unacceptable way for a long time. So I just wanted to make sure that's in there too, really. That's all. Thanks.
Thanks, Douglas. Joe?
Thanks. Yeah, I'm sad, I agree with Douglas that we should be looking for a positive impact on equality and on climate change. I will say, before I get to my point, I did click on the link in Eugene's latest circular email, learn more about EDI training. It was a broken link. So possibly, because I'm obviously a 365 user and other members of staff will be on the other network, maybe it works for them. So my central point is on item 12 again, and I do think it's interesting that of all the priorities, and it's, you know, it's a good report, a very good effective coverage of the issues and challenges we face, that so much of the talk is about housing repairs because it is such a significant failure of the council. And I was speaking to a housing officer this morning and, you know, they're frustrated, they're immensely frustrated, they're helping their residents go through, you know, navigate their way through the repairs system. I do think it's not, I mean, there may be issues of culture and there may be issues of, you know, how we present ourselves as employers and there may be ceiling problems with the new IT system, but the housing repair service has not been performing ever since it was in-sourced, which must be nearly five years ago now. And we considered this in scrutiny last summer and we asked questions and, you know, there was a plan that they were developing to do something about this. Nothing's changed. It's year after year, it seems, that we recognise as a problem, the housing repair service, ever since it was in-sourced and it just carries on. And, you know, tenants and tenants come to this meeting and say to us, look, where is the repair that I am paying for with my rent money that you are obliged to do? Where is it? And the consequence of that is that obviously we're facing claims for disrepair, rightly so, which is causing extra costs and extra legal costs. We've got vacant properties that are not being brought up to standard for re-letting and so they were losing rent doing that and as they are vacant, they are declining further and adding more costs. It is incomprehensible to me how we have not got a grip with this, with the housing repair service after year, after year, after year of failure. So, I mean, you know, there are 12 items of kind of priorities in this and item 12 in the list is, it's not item 12, it's like the fifth one or something, is only one of those and housing repair is only one of the services. So I suppose I'm arguing for kind of a greater priority and greater consideration given to that. But also my question, I suppose, is, obviously the contact centre James has mentioned, the council tax collection Mr Slack has mentioned, both quite rightly are also services that are not performing to standard. Special educational needs and disabilities services for children are another one that has attracted reputational damage to this council for its performance. If we're kind of brave new world coming clean at this point, these are the services that are really not good enough and that we're going to have a real targeted look at to try and put them right, you know, what is the complete list? I've mentioned four. I mean, what is the list and should it be in this report? And if not, can we be told what we think the list is? Because maybe we'll brainstorm and come up with a few more. Thanks.
Thanks, Douglas. Thanks, Joe. Welcome to our world of trying to prioritise which service comes in front of which service and I look forward to the discussion. We've, a number of chairs around this group will be arguing their committee, their budget will be more of a priority than another one. So I look forward to further discussions around that. James, would you like to answer Douglas and Joe?
Thanks, Chair. So just on Douglas's questions, on the, sorry, I think the first point was about the implications of the report and I agree, I think that's something that we need to make sure that we get right. I completely agree that the corporate plan will have, or it should have, and if it doesn't then we've probably done something very, very wrong, significant equalities and climate change implications. We need to be really clear about those when we bring those reports forward for members' considerations and we need to make sure that we have got robust impact assessments completed both for equalities and for climate change and I'm confident that that's exactly what we will do. So that one's definitely on the list. On the one-year plan question about what's been achieved, yes, there is a lot of work that has gone on to pull that together and to provide that summary, so I'm sure that's something that we can provide to members. I think it's just about complete, I need to check on its status. And then I think your final point was about sort of involvement, engagement of communities and of the public and that being given greater prominence and greater priority. I think I mentioned the work that's involved we're doing and certainly there's an ambition, once we've got that, to bring something forward that sets out in more detail an approach or a proposed approach to how we put the people of Sheffield sort of centre stage in terms of some of the decision-making and so on and provide that greater voice and influence. Councillor Otten's question about the underperformance of the repair service and what else should be on the list, I think that's something that we might be able to cover in the performance management item that I mentioned earlier. That will provide a comprehensive view of how the council as a whole is performing. So I think by bringing that forward, that will give you that sense that you're looking for. I think you, as officers, we look at this on a regular basis, we were talking about it this morning, those services that you mentioned are certainly on there. I would just say that on SEND, there has actually been a very recent and welcome significant improvement in performance there, so I think it's important to recognise that. Thank you.
Thanks, James. Final two, we've got Richard and then Brian. Richard?
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, James, for a very comprehensive report. I too am focusing on 12.1, these failing areas and the increased focus to improve them. My concern is that in my experience, when an organisation focuses on one part of its business, it takes its eye off the other parts. I don't want this to happen in Sheffield, so what considerations have you or are you going to put in place to make sure that the good-performing departments remain good?
Thank you, Richard. Brian?
Yeah, thanks, Chair. It's very interesting listening to all the commentary and thank you, James, for the report and the officers that put this together. I think one of the most crucial things that we look at comes under 22 in where we need to prioritise our resources because we're under no illusion, this is not going to be easy, you know. Come back into the finance and it's like, welcome back, by the way, there's an 18 and a half million overspend, you know, in six weeks. So I think we're under no illusion of what we're facing here, but I think we've got to be honest about things. It's not that we're having to face, because we are severely underfunded by government for what we need in the city. And I think part of our job is to highlight this and get this out there and get to them and say, look, you are not funding us fairly, you are not funding us for what the people of Sheffield need. And I think it's important that we are listening to the people of Sheffield and it's prioritising the resources because there are many things that are out there that we're going to have to take some very, very tough decisions. And as chairs and co-chairs and vice-chairs of these committees, and I think councillor Fox alluded to it, it's going to be interesting to turn around and say, well, you know, that's not quite the priority against someone else's priority and we're going to have to look at these things. And I think it... And I think we've got to be honest with the people out there, we've got to be honest with ourselves, that we're going to have to make some very tough decisions. But I think prioritising the resources, the priority budget, what are going to be our priorities out there? What are going to be the themes that we can then work towards? Because there will be cross-cutting things across many of these committees that will fit into some of these priorities that are there. And it's going to take, it's going to take a lot of work in a very short space of time for us to get something together on those. I think there's some confusion as well, just a comment really, on there's some confusion when we talk about the backlog of repairs. It's my understanding that's across the property portfolio, not the housing revenue account. That's a separate issue that's in there, because they are funded through the housing revenue account. This is our buildings, our property, our estate that's out there. So, you know, it's, and again, it's be under no illusion, we're going to have to make some tough decisions. It might be rationalisation of building, it might be rationalisation of some of our assets to fund the repairs that are in there and going through. But again, it's another one where we're going to have to prioritise and look at it and bring it through. It's a challenge, and it's a challenge that I'm sure we're all up to, but it's not something that's, we should look at and go, well, we need to. We've got to get everybody involved, we've got to get all aspects of the city involved, whether it's the academia, whether it's the health, whether it's the business, whether it's the communities and people out there. And I think the work that needs to be continued on things like that we started with the local area committees, I was part of a working group that was looking at that, at what we were trying to develop and bring out there. And there are always plans to look at doing more of the services going out with that local knowledge of delivering the services out there. And I think that will form part of where we're looking and prioritising and bringing things together. So I think it's going to be a challenge, but I think we'll all have to knuckle down and accept that we're going to have to make some very tough decisions amongst us in this room and in the wider city. Thanks, Chair.
Thanks, Brian. James, you want to answer Richard and Brian's points?
Yeah, thank you, Chair. Just very quickly, Rich's point about how we ensure that good performing areas don't slip, I think that's something that we do through the performance management process. It's something that we already do regularly about celebrating areas of success and making sure that we learn from those, so that we don't just focus on those areas that are perhaps underperforming, but we look at where areas are doing well. We talked this morning, as I said, about SEND and trying to learn from the work that has been done there. So, yeah, maintaining that overview is very important as we do that. But I suppose going on to councillor Lodge's point, prioritisation may mean that we have to make some decisions about the relative performance that we're prepared to accept across different service areas. And getting that, making those decisions and getting that right is doubtless going to be hard. Just on Brian's point about the repairs backlog, yes, just to be absolutely clear, the paper is talking about the corporate estate, so the town hall, other corporate buildings, and not the housing estate. But there is, as we've already discussed, a significant issue with housing repairs and maintenance as well, as we know. Thank you.
Thanks, James. Well, thanks everyone for that brutal discussion, I think, putting it all on the carpet in some respects of our challenges going forward. Certainly going to enjoy navigating through some of these issues that you've already raised as a committee. So with those comments in mind and the recommendations to the report, can we agree those? Agree, everybody against? Thank you, thank you very much. And I think the next item will just show us what even bigger challenge we've got. Item nine, financial position and budget timetable. Brian?
Thanks, Chair. It goes without saying, the council's in a very challenging financial position, and the report provides both background information to the council's position and sets out four things. The outterm position in summary for 21/22, the use that we are making of reserves that we've set aside to help us through our financial challenges, the latest forecast for this financial year 22/3, as at the 30th of April, so a month one, a very early position, but a forecast nonetheless, and the outlook and the budget timetable for 23/24. In the background information, the point I want to draw out really is the reiteration of the recommendations approved at full council fairly recently, in fact, requiring both offices and policy committees to stay within the budgets that have been approved at council. And that's a key part of the context for what I'm about to say. The council finished 21/22 19.8 million pounds overspent. The position did improve towards the end of the year, but that remains a significant and unsustainable overspend. We've also now used or allocated 54 million of the 70 million pounds of reserves that we've set aside as a council to manage through the financial position that we've got following the pandemic and other issues, and to give us time to return to a financially sustainable balanced position. That 54 million does include 15 million that we allocated to allow the council to set a balanced budget for 22/23. So a reminder to this committee that the budget that we set in March of this year for this financial year actually required 15 million pounds of reserves to do that. As at month one, so as at the 30th of April, we are forecasting an 18.7 million pound overspend for this year. In the most part, that's due to savings that were approved as part of the budget that are not going to be fully delivered, or at this stage, we believe they won't be. There is obviously time for that position to improve, provided that the necessary work is done. And this report specifically asks this committee to require any policy committee that's facing an overspend or a forecast overspend to develop plans to address that. It also asks this committee to ask the finance subcommittee to monitor both the development of those plans and performance against them. Looking forward to 23/24, the position remains challenging, you'll be not surprised to hear me say that. There are no indications from government yet of any additional financial support. I know that's come up in both reports and questions and answers earlier. And any announcement that we may get from government in the normal course of business would be towards the end of the budget process and not early enough in it for it to be of use to us in setting planning assumptions that I would be prepared to advise the council to use. Typically, we would hear about national totals for investment in local authorities in around October, towards the end of October, with the specific details for this council in the week or two before Christmas. So far too late, as the report says, to assist with a budget setting process. We're facing a significant budget gap for next year. We're working on a more precise estimate of that, but 60 to 70 million set out as it is in the report is entirely possible. That does include estimates, again, as far as we're able to make them at this stage, for things like energy prices as we move into next year. So we know what we're paying this year, we know how we're dealing with it, we have some views as to where they might go for next year. So that budget gap, as councillor Lodge said, you know, will require members to make some very difficult decisions about the services that this council provides in the future and how those services are provided. And with that in mind, I'm recommending that the budget timetable is brought forward quite significantly this year. So the next meeting of this committee on the 5th of July, and the reports that are required to achieve this are all in the forward plan that we discussed earlier, will receive a medium-term financial analysis report from me and my team, together with recommended budget targets for each of the policy committees. And that's about three months earlier than we would have done under normal business and as we did under the previous cabinet or cooperative executive system. The significant point here for me is that that timetable requires policy committees to do significant work over the course of this summer, to develop proposals to manage within the budget targets that this committee will set in July. Planning in the budget timetable for a report from each policy committee back to this committee on the 12th of October, and again, that's set out in the timetable, that requires policy committees to report to themselves during the month of September. So that period over the summer from the 5th of July, when the targets are hopefully set by this group, to those September meetings is going to require some significant work from officers and members together to develop budget proposals. In some committees, that will be relatively challenging, in some committees, that will be relatively easy. It is not absolutely easy in any place, but the relative difficulty will vary by committee. So my hope is that the budget process completes by Christmas. That's the situation in every year, we try to complete a budget process by Christmas. And that gives us then a good time to get us to the 1st of February council, full council meeting, which will deal with the housing rent setting, and the 1st of March full council meeting, which will deal with the normal general fund revenue and capital budget. And I just, we'll make the point that we'll run the capital budget in parallel with the revenue budget this year. So I don't see those two things as separate, they're just different types of investment that the council is able to make. Thank you, Chair.
Thanks, Ryan. I've got Mick and then Martin. Mick?
Yeah, it's, yeah, we've all got to make serious prioritisation decisions about what does or doesn't continue to be delivered to the people of Sheffield. I suppose I should declare an interest as a co-chair of one of the committees that is forecasting a rather large overspend. And I'm looking at my colleague councillor Argentio, who has got a very similar problem. And the thing that disturbed me, well, not disturbed me, but made my ears prick up, was when Ryan said that for some people, it's going to be relatively easy, and for others, it's going to be relatively difficult. I would suggest you need to add another word to that, is that for some people, it will be impossible, because we will be in a position where we are not fulfilling our statutory obligations. And what I don't quite understand is how we have a process that says, for example, if I was to say, one of the choices I'm faced with is closing, and I'm just picking these off the top of my head, a series of children's homes, right? And somebody, I would rather the bins not be emptied quite as often, and again, I'm just picking that off the top of my head, rather than do the first proposal that I've just said. So what I can't quite understand is where, if I was to put up the white flag, my committee was to put up the white flag and say, we can't do this, we can't make our budget add up with the resources that we've got. How does this system, this structure, deal with that? Because I can't quite work it out. Thank you.
Cheers, Mick. Ryan, do you want to just answer that kind of analogy?
Thanks, Chair. Thanks for the question, Mick. So that process, there is time in this plan throughout October and November for those discussions to happen if they are needed. So this is a specific point you say, if your committee puts its hand up and says, you know, we can't do it or whatever, there is time in the plan to do that. So there's a specific iteration of the process to allow another discussion at this committee before the budgets are finalised.
Okay, I mean, I'll accept that, but the words that worry me are that there's time in the plan rather than time in the structure. And if we've got a structure that prevents that sort of thing happening, then I think maybe we've got an issue that we, six months' time, we need to look at.
Thanks, Mick. Martin?
Thank you, Chair. And just building on what Mick said, you know, under the new scheme of things, we've all got a collective responsibility here. I agree completely that, you know, everybody in this room's got a role to play in trying to, I won't say rectify, but address the current situation. Because, pardon my language, it's bloody serious. But the first thing we need to do is to, I think, understand why we're in this situation. And the thing that staggers me, if I'm brutally honest, is that six weeks ago, what we were at, six to eight weeks ago, when we were setting the budget, we thought, okay, it's difficult, but it's, we've got a budget. And then six to eight weeks later, it's, oh, we've got an 18 million pound problem. And I'm not disputing that, but, you know, that works out at about an average slippage of about 400,000 pounds a week, if you did it in those terms. So how did we not know six weeks ago that we had a problem of this magnitude? Thank you.
Cheers, Martin. Ryan?
Thanks, Terry. We've been monitoring the budget implementation plans, of which the 18-point million is pretty much all of it, since they were put together. So we've been looking at this since the start of March. We've had monthly reports on this coming forward to officers, officer groups to try and manage this issue out. It's not unusual for us in the first iteration of a budget monitoring report to have an overspend. You can go back every year that I'm familiar with at this council, and you'll see overspends in early months, that we are able to work together to deal with as the year goes on and to manage down either completely or to an insignificant number by the end of the year. The challenge this year is that we had to use 53 million pounds of savings in the budget process to try to balance the budget, as well as 15 million pounds of reserves. So the overspend or the budget pressure going into the budget in March was massive. The savings that we had to seek approval for in March were significant, and some of them very challenging. What we're seeing now is that we are starting to see pressures and difficulty in delivering some of those savings as the year starts. There's an opportunity, as I said, for that number to improve as time goes on, if we can work together to deliver some of the savings that are currently being forecasted as not capable of being delivered, or very late, or something similar. But it is a very difficult situation for us to be in, I make no bones about it.
Thanks, Ryan. Eugene?
Thanks. Just to add what I say, I mean, the first thing to say really is, I think it's good we're doing this. We were here right at the start of the year, in a committee on a cross-party basis, discussing the issues that will face us. And I kind of hope there's a lot of ability, as Ryan said, in bringing the budget process forward, that we can get that debate and discussion done a lot easier. Because we will stand a better chance of success if those issues are shared and worked through collectively. This, I mean, just a few little points about kind of how we get here. I mean, this is, as we all know partly, this is 10 years of reductions in our funding. The kind of context of local government funding in the wider public sector is well-known. We are not unusual, along with a lot of councils, about the financial position we face. We face a particularly tight version of it at the moment, with the challenges on social care. But you would find this discussion and debate in any significant sized council in the country. And really, that is part of the wider context about kind of where the answer will come from, if ever, from government, about kind of what responsibilities local government has and how they are adequately funded. But that is where we are, that isn't going to change immediately. So our context is that difficulty, as Ryan said, we set actually our most challenging budget after that 10 years last year. And the position we're in now is not unusual. At the start of any year, we set a budget, we have an expectation of delivering some budget implementation plans, but there are always a series of things that need to be put in place to follow that through. And we have regularly done early reports like this. And this is the point about openness and transparency. We're doing this clearly about those difficulties, so we can get actions in the year to try and compensate and eradicate those. Social care remains our biggest challenge, it always has and will, and there were some significant savings in here. But I think one of the challenges we're going to have to talk about is kind of what, you know, statutory responsibilities are an interesting point. They don't actually help you solve a budget, in my experience. I think we have to spend some time and place in the budget process about what is the level of service that we need across a lot of our services for the money we have affordable. And that doesn't mean that we don't maintain our statutory duties, it's a choice about the level at which we provide services. So we know we've got some services that are not up to scratch, but we also know, you know, how can we have services that are good enough within the context of the resources we've got? That will be one of the collective challenges of this process. We have, for just about every year I can remember, put significant additional money into social care. That money is never enough, but we have never actually cut the social care budget in this council. We've always prioritised it, and we continue to do that. We put more money into social care last year. That's one of our biggest dilemmas, as with other councils, that money is... That money is, we put more in, but it's never enough for the mounting pressures. How do we review those pressures and work out how we kind of resolve that tension? And alongside the other day-to-day services that we've also been talking about, that we know are not where they need to be. The government isn't going to come and rescue us on that. It's left us in a really difficult position, but that's the dilemma we face. And I think it's easier, as Ryan did says, if we do that earlier and we work through that collectively for a solution for the city, because that's kind of, that's kind of in our hands. Because underlying all this, the statutory duty we have is to not run out of money and balance the budget. And if we don't do that, every single other statutory duty is off, the bets are off. So I think it's about that. And I think, I think the good thing is, is I think there's a wide awareness of that and this report's an early start in kind of setting the tone for the year about how we get through that. Thanks.
Thanks, Eugene. Martin, do you want to come? Are you okay? I'll bring Angela in.
No, I think I made my point. I'm sure other people, I don't want to hold the conversation.
Cheers, Martin. Angela, then, Jo.
Thank you, Chair. And I want to echo what Mick said before, you know, of the overspend, quite a lot of it. It's actually half of it, I think, is in my co-chaired portfolio. And, you know, I agree with Rooney, I would prefer to not have my bin collected, but not let some of the most vulnerable people in our city down with the services that are, you know, in, in social care. We've had, like, in the last ten years or so, we've had like a rise in kind of demand whilst the funding has gone down. So that's the extra challenge, isn't it? So thank you, Ryan, for mentioning the, you know, the conversation that we will be having in the autumn. But I've already been making notes and because the committees are responsible for their, you know, balancing their kind of books, if you want, I've already got lots of questions that I want to ask my directors. So I will like keeping a close eye on that because we can't wait until October. Because lots of these, effectively, these cuts that we need to make decisions about, we should really have them right in front of us and decide which ones we can afford to make cuts and which one we'll have to find money somewhere else. But I think whilst we are looking at having to make difficult choices, I also want us to look forward and outwards where the new opportunities are for funding, because we know that the government are not going to come and rescue us, we're well aware of that. But are there opportunities that we are not looking at because we are so focused on the really difficult decisions that we have to make? And that is something that maybe we need to also concentrate on at the same time as making these very, very difficult decisions. So I want us to look at opportunities as well, you know, so what savings we can make, what cuts we unfortunately have to make. But also what money is out there that we're not tapping into? That, you know, so I want to see that as well in the next reports, what have we looked at? And even if we failed to, you know, if it doesn't apply to us, but what are we looking at? And what we're not looking at? But I certainly have lots of notes, but that I, you know, I want to see when the decisions are going to be made on these VIPs and how soon can we make those decisions?
Thanks, Angela. Ryan?
Thanks, Chair. Thanks, Angela. So I'll be coming along to your committee, as I will to all the committees in the course of June to talk about the specific budget positions in your committee, and that'll be a good opportunity to, to ask those questions if you've got any thoughts in advance. I'm sure both my team and your director would appreciate a bit of advance notice. In terms of seeking outside funding, absolutely. That's something we do all the time, but I think it is always, there's always a risk when you're in a very challenging financial position that you focus on cutting as opposed to income generation. And the answer is always both. In many of the services in City Futures and operational services within the council, over recent years, we've moved to, you know, significantly reduce the subsidy that's provided to those services by council taxpayers, business rate payers, by the council. And have sought very heavily to make those services as financially independent of the council as possible. There's always more we can do, and I'm sure there are more, there's more that we can do in other services as well. So I look forward to discussions, not just with, with your committee, but with all committees as to how we might best do that.
Thanks, Ryan. Jo?
Thank you, Chair. Yes, I mean, thank you for the report, Ryan. It's grim, it's grim reading. It's also, I mean, I'm slightly puzzled by the sense I got from Eugene in response to Martin's question was that, yes, it's grim reading, but it's also kind of what we should expect in the circumstances. A lot of other councils are in similar positions. And maybe that's, maybe that's the case, maybe it is grim and we should expect things to be grim because the funding situation, because of the, you know, the recent kind of one-off things and because of our particular combination of of high demand for both adult and children's social care. But even having said all that, I didn't expect us to have a, pass a budget that had, that required fifteen million reserves to back for it in March. Because the whole time we've been on the council, we've not done that. And then I didn't expect us to be nineteen million short after a month. So that's thirty four million short of balance. It feels like we are effectively within this year. And my question is therefore, how bad does it have to be before we think about, do, I mean, do we go back to, you know, savings that were worked up but not taken for that budget, that were not taken because they would have been, you know, savings we don't want to take would have been very difficult to take. But at what point do we say, do we go back to what was worked up for that budget and not taken and say, what, we've got to take it? And not just for next year's budget, within year? At what point do we say, we're going to need an emergency budget for this council to stop commissioners being appointed and those savings being taken anyway, but taken out of our hands?
Thanks, Jo. Just at this point, I'd like to say, for anybody who's, if you've had a third of your housekeeping took from you, there's only so much that the rest of the housekeeping can be spent on. And welcome to the world of cross-party working to trying to get to a solution, to get to a budget for next March. And I think that this discussion, as good as it is, is highlighting across to anybody who's watching this meeting now, the difficulties yourselves as chairs are going to have to balance a budget this year with a third of the income took away. And so I really get to the point where you're coming from, Jo, and over to Ryan, but I just think we need to keep that in back of our mind. If you lost a third of your housekeeping, unfortunately, there's some things in this world we're not going to be able to pay for unless you borrow or use your, or use your servings, of which we've had to do. Ryan?
Thanks, Chair. I think it'll be important as individual committees work through the challenges that they face and the specific reasons for those challenges, they're not all the same. In some cases, we do see increasing numbers of people, numbers of service users coming forward. In the most part, it's the cost of providing those services that is the real issue. So it's the average cost per service user that's often an issue as opposed to necessarily the number of service users. Now, sometimes that's because the complexity of the specific service user's need has changed or is increased. But some of the savings proposals that were worked up last year as part of the budget process may very well need to be looked at again to determine whether they are capable of being implemented or whether, you know, that's something that each individual committee wishes to consider. And you're absolutely right, both for in-year and for the future. There's nothing to stop a committee or this committee taking a decision to implement a new proposal. That's entirely possible. And that's something that we probably will need to consider as we move through the year to try and share the financial, the financial position of the council. The seventy million pounds that we've set aside to give us some time and space to get us to a sustainable financial position is something that we can afford. That's a decision that we took as part of the budget process last year. And our reserves remain adequate, even if that seventy million pounds is spent. The challenge we have, the challenges will really start to hit us if we spend that seventy million pounds and are still not financially sustainable. So we can, we can use the seventy million pounds to get us into a sustainable position, provided we do that, we'll be financially sustainable and as, you know, the commissioners will not be knocking on our door for financial reasons. If we are, if we use all the seventy million pounds and we're still spending hundreds of thousands of pounds a week of reserves, there will come a point in time, not too far away, when, when we start to look very, you know, in a financially very difficult place, and that's when that risk starts to crystallise.
Thanks, Jo. I've got Richard, then Brian. Richard?
Thank you, Chair. This is probably be, probably going to be one of many stupid questions I ask on this committee. I'm struggling a bit because I've heard, I've heard again today that for the last ten or so years, this council has been underfunded by central government. And yet two years ago, we had what I thought was seventy million pounds reserves. In fact, it sounds as if we've got more. And I just find that I can't square that circle. Has it been done through selling off one-off purchases, that type of thing, or has it just been, actually there is a surplus in the budget?
Brian?
I'd be surprised if you ask a daft question, councillor Williams. No, what we've done and what we certainly did during the course of last year is have a really good look at the risk-based reserves that the council holds. The council holds reserves for three reasons really. Money that's not ours, that doesn't really belong to us, that we hold it on account for another purpose. Reserves to deal with timing issues such as the debt repayment on the major sporting facilities debt that comes to, comes to a conclusion in a couple of years' time. Or we hold money against risk. That risk can be the risk of a flood, it can be the risk of some damage to the highways network that's not within the scope of the AMI contract, for example, some of the bridge repairs and someone which might be outside the scope. Or for a whole raft of other things. We've taken, a major part of it was actually pensions. The risk of an increase in the pension contribution rate, for which we were holding a reasonable reserve. The pension scheme, South Yorkshire Pension Scheme, had its valuation two or three years ago and is in surplus and it still continues to be in surplus. The most recent valuation for that pension scheme says that the contribution rates will not increase, from our perspective. So the reason for that reserve is far more diminished than it was. So we've taken a decision, along with a few other reserves as well, that we can use those to create a pot of money to try and get us back to a financially sustainable position. So it's a moving feast, is the honest answer, but that's a little bit more detail, hopefully.
Thanks, Ryan. Thanks, Richard. And if you ask any more foolish questions more than me, I'd be surprised. I'll be asking quite, quite many, but thanks for that question. Richard, Brian?
Yeah, thanks. And if you think you're asking foolish questions, Ryan can always tell, as I spoke to him earlier on, he can always tell when I've been sat on a long bus journey going home. Because you'll start getting some weird, wonderful questions and what about this and looking at that. I think it's, if anybody has looked at the budgets over the last twelve years and looked at them, yes, you will see at the start of the year, because some of the business, the budget implementation plans don't always come through on time and they come later. So whilst we're looking at that there, and again, you know, it's not, it's not saying it's not a problem. It is a problem because we've got to implement some of these things. And in all these committees that people are chairing, yeah, you're going to have to look at all these things here. In some respects, my role is easier than a finance cabinet chair, finance cabinet member, because it's everybody else in here now. It's the responsibility of all of us to go through. But I think it goes back to what we were saying earlier, when looking at the corporate plan, it's looking at what we consider the priorities. Because there will be some services out there that we do have to look at and we do have to make a decision. Do we continue with them as they are? Do we look, and I suppose it's in response to what Mick said and Ryan answered as well. We have got statutory responsibilities, but in many of those statutory duties that we do, we go above and beyond. And do we need to start paring those down? Do we need to start looking at things? It's no stone unturned really in looking through to try and find where we are. But later on, we're talking about supporting residents in the cost of living crisis. You know, that's going to have an impact if we're looking at things there. We face constantly all the time, we hear about, and Nigel's like mentioning questions, business rates and domestic rate, domestic council tax recovery rates. We actually do quite well on there and they're always, we never sort of write things off. It's very, very rare that there's anything and we will continue to pursue. But some of these things may be coming through and it may come through and help us in, for getting some of these things through here. But we've also got to grow the base, the business tax base by growing and encouraging more businesses. We've got to grow the council tax income by including more housing and generating things in there and coming through. So it's looking at, it's balancing off, I suppose, you know, do we invest to save? Do we look in on things and how do we do all that? But it's not going to be easy, but I'm confident that we've got enough knowledge and wherewithal between us in here and with the officers that we can start to look. But it's down, it's got to be down to the honest discussions and debates. And, you know, in previous years, it's been very difficult in coming up with some of the proposals. We know that the budget proposals that went through from all the, all the groups came up and looked at those reserves and using those reserves because they were including everybody's budget last year. So we know, we all know how difficult it's been. But it's now been a bit more grown up about it and all taking a little bit of a wider view and overview on here. And I think, you know, we're going to have to look and I suppose it's in response to what councillor Argentio and councillor Rooney said. Contributions from other parts of the council's budget will be required to help us in these areas where we are struggling through. And it's the, it's a difficult one, but you know, if you cut one service, perhaps no one's going to die. But if you cut too much into the social care sides of things, then you are putting people at risk. But I think we do, and we've all got to get together and we're going to make those shout-outs to the government, make those arguments to the government with colleagues in other authorities and with, such as the LGA, to turn around and say, you've got to review what you're doing in funding local authorities. Because we are at breaking point, we're not alone, as the officers have said. It's up and down the country and some councils have already gone, thrown the keys in and commissioners are there. We don't want that to be. I don't think any of us, there are eighty-four councils in this city. I don't think any of us come on here expecting to bring commissioners in to take over running the council. And I don't think any of us want to see it. So, you know, I'm sure we'll all work together and find a solution and get through things. Thanks, Jo.
Thanks, Brian. If there's no more questions, comments, we've got the recommendations on page seventeen. Can we agree those? Agreed? Thank you. Next item, I suppose, follows on quite nicely from this actually. James, you want to present?
Thanks, Chair. So the next item is on the cost of living crisis, which is item ten on the agenda. So the report today brings members up to speed with the position in the, in the city in terms of the cost of living crisis at the moment. As far as we, as we understand it, with one caveat, which we mentioned in a minute, sets out what the council has been doing to date around the cost of living crisis and then suggests an approach or a way forward for how we might look to tackle this over the coming months and particularly as we move into the winter period when we now know that the energy cap is going to rise even further come October. So as we, as we know, this has been a very live issue at the moment with the increases in inflation that we're seeing, which has been driven by a range of different factors. And that's already beginning to have a significant impact on the people and communities of Sheffield. Those impacts are not being felt equally across the city, I think it's probably fair to say, although they are being felt actually by pretty much every household. It's just the degree of that will be somewhat different in different cases. As I say, we know that that is likely to get worse as we move into the, into the winter. And that is a considerable concern for very many people across the city at the moment. So there is a range of steps that we've taken within S C C. But since this report was finalised, the government has also announced additional action, as I'm sure members... the government has also announced additional action, as I'm sure members will be aware. So for example, they have introduced a new £400 energy grant for all households, and an additional one-off payment of £650 for all those households who are in receipt of benefits, and a £300 payment for pensioners who receive winter fuel payments. There's also been an announcement of a further half a billion pound support nationally for the Household Support Fund and changes to the way in which the universal credit taper and work allowances work, all of which actually will make positive impact. There are some big questions about targeting of that support, but those changes will have an impact. So I just wanted to make sure members were aware of that, as that didn't make its way into the report or into the timing of it. As I say, we are doing a lot within SCC at the moment. There is a lot of money that goes into the household support, funding and emergency payments that we make to people. We have moved forward with the council tax rebate, and Ryan's team have done a significant amount of work to get the council tax rebate out, both for those who pay through direct debit and for those who don't with a post office payout to the 77,000 households who are eligible but who we don't have bank account details for. We've agreed some new investment in tackling food poverty, and we're proposing through this report that we bring forward a plan around that to the next meeting. And we've also instituted, working with the South Yorkshire Community Foundation, a cost of living crisis fund, which we are hoping that people who are able to, with a stress on that, will be able to donate any rebate that they might not need to that fund. And we've put some money into that as well. We've also had the Poverty Summit last October, and we've developed a poverty action plan, or we're developing, I should say, a poverty action plan around that. We know that poverty has increased during the pandemic as well, fairly substantially. So we've got some long-term issues with ingrained deprivation, inequalities and poverty. And then we've got this cost of living crisis that we've now got to face on top of that. What we're suggesting in this paper is that although most of, or a lot of what can be done, requires national action, there is a lot that we can do ourselves, working with our partners. So coordinating a focused response, maximising the support and impact that we can have for people and communities, supporting people to make the best possible choices about how they might use the more limited income that they have, helping people to maximise their income further, which includes but isn't limited to benefit maximisation work, providing direct and indirect financial support, including through the various hardship schemes that we're responsible for, for those people who are in real difficulty, supporting people who are struggling to cope. And as a minimum, ensuring that the actions that we're taking as a local authority and with our partners don't exacerbate any problems further. So making sure that we're having sensible joined-up approaches to the way in which we deal with council tax and rent arrears, for example. And then what we also need to do, or this report suggests that we need to do, is to provide that visible and high-profile leadership for the city. So what we're suggesting is that over the next few months, we learn the lessons from the COVID-19 response and set up what we've described as an instant management response. We're sort of using the language of gold and silver. And that doesn't mean a command and control type of arrangement, where there's a group of people who sort of come together and tell everybody else what to do, but rather instituting some of the principles of how we respond to a significant crisis or incident for the city. So making sure that we've got really clear data that we're using to inform our decision, that that's being shared, and that we all understand what we're doing, both within the council and with our partners, setting a clear and easily followed strategy that is agreed by everyone, making sure that we've got some proper governance in place, and that we've got the right people ready to deliver on different aspects of the response, and being clear about what success might look like across the city. So we're proposing that we move towards a model of responding to the crisis that uses that sort of structure. So a strategic group, a goal group, if you want to use that language, that sets strategy in direction, and then a tactical or silver group to coordinate the planning and activity and make sure that the right things are happening. Our proposal is that we would approach that on a partnership basis. So making sure that we draw in partners from the private, other parts of the public and the voluntary sectors as well, recognising that this needs to be a cross-city response, working very closely with the local area committees, and ensuring that we involve members of each of the policy committees, recognising again that this is going to be a cross-city, a cross-council set of issues or challenges that we have to respond to here. One of the things that we also think is going to be important for the way in which we respond to this is making sure that we fully and properly involve communities and local people within this, making sure that we're utilising and working with the local area committees who are connected into their communities, so that we can resolve the specific challenges that might exist for different neighbourhoods in the different parts of the city, making sure that we're supporting people to access local advice, guidance and support where they need it. And one of the other things that we've suggested in the report that we might look to do is to have, or is to establish a reference group of people who are experiencing the impacts of this, so that we get a deeper range of insights and ideas that we might not otherwise be able to access this. If we were to do that, we would need to do that obviously in a very careful and sensitive way, and would probably look to work with an external organisation to support us in doing that. So that, I hope, just provides an overview of the report, Chair. Very happy to take any questions on that. Thank you.
Thanks, James. A very decisive report. I know we've got some notice and motions at full council tomorrow, so we can kind of debate this more thoroughly. But at the moment, obviously discussing the plan put forward. I've got Mick then, Douglas and Angela.
Thanks, Chair. I know that as a city, we are doing some investments into insulation and that sort of thing. So I'm just wondering, because the obvious, well, an obvious part of the solution to this is to stop the expense being incurred in the first place, in other words, insulate property, et cetera, et cetera. So have we, or will part of the discussions that take place in the future be possibly around front-loading some of our investment schemes in insulation and that sort of thing? Or in terms of housing, potentially having another think about what the priorities are in terms of housing revenue account, capital spend, and maybe redirecting some of those other spends into perhaps more urgent issues that we have now, which is insulating our properties?
Thanks, Mick. James?
Yeah, thanks very much, Mick. I think it's exactly those sorts of conversations that we need to have. Those sorts of things, for me, need to be on the table and be discussed as part of this. I can't at this moment in time say, yes, that's something that we would definitely do. But I think that's absolutely the sort of thing that we need to have very much on the agenda. And that's why I was saying, it's really important that we have representatives from all of the committees as part of that. So for example, on housing or on climate change, I think that we need to be able to bring those in and make sure that we've got that coordinated response, and we can take that back into the committees for decision if it's needed. Because that group that I've described obviously won't have decision-making responsibilities within the kind of the formal governance structure of the council. So it gives us a space to coordinate and discuss, and then we can take those back into the relevant committees as needed. And in that example, I guess, the housing or the climate change committee.
Could I then ask of the chairs' permission that that is a specific recommendation that comes from this afternoon's meeting? I don't know if that's going to upset somebody's future plans, but I just, it's a thought, that's all.
No, Mick. One of the issues when we set the HRA and with a cooperative executive, we looked at the insulation that we were doing. I know Douglas is going to bring him in in a minute. But we committed £53 million to the 6,000 housing stock that's not at TPC level. And obviously, we need to get out, we might not be able to control the price of the heating. But if we can limit the amount of, in some respects. So it will be a main point from that committee to look at as well. But I'll bring Douglas in. I know Douglas has got some points on housing. And then Angela. Douglas?
Thank you. Yeah, I mean, just that one, yeah. But I'll undertake that to the Housing Committee. And personally, I agree, it's a really important thing, and it's something we can do for people. So we'd better get on and do it. So, yep, happy with that. James, just on the question was just, you referred to the language around gold command and silver command, and perhaps flagged up, it's that sort of unusual language for people in civilian life in a way. I just suppose I just wanted reassurance that we're not proposing to replace any of the existing democratic decision-making structures in the way that was brought in with the emergency provisions at the start of the COVID pandemic. If we can have that reassurance, that will be helpful. Because if that's the case, then certainly support the idea of setting up a cross-party and with external organisations, if it works like the COVID prevention and management boards, which actually worked very well in that setting, I think.
Thanks, Douglas. James?
Thanks, Chair. Yes, no, I can absolutely provide that reassurance. It will not override any of the democratic structures. And I think thinking about it on a similar way to the COVID board is a good way of thinking about it. It would be something similar to that that we're envisaging.
We're also just to clarify, we are expecting to bring them results back here as well. So as Chair, we will be invited to those meetings, et cetera. So it will be cross-party as well. Okay. I've got Angela Demmartin or Joe. Angela?
Yeah, I suppose mine is a very similar question to Douglas. It's just, I was just thinking in terms of governance, how it would sit in the new system, and how we reassure us and people out there that we're not trying to introduce like a cabinet system by the back door, if you want, where. But, you know, you've already answered that. And also, who decides what constitutes a crisis? That is so important, that goes to the gold command, the silver command. Because, you know, we want to, some swift action if, you know, if we have a crisis of whatever kind. But who decides what is a crisis?
Thanks, Angela. Let me just put this to bed. This is not about trying to bring back a cabinet system. This is recognising the serious situation we've got outside at the moment. And the issue of bringing it back to the S and R committee is that we are not, anything is not falling through the gaps. That if we have a big issue in housing, that the evictions, one of the big things that are keeping me really earnest at the moment is private rented, that we are aware of that, that if there's any kind of evictions or any possible issues on child safety or anything, that will land up here. It will be for us to pick that up. So what we can't do is having each individual committee running on silos. We need to make sure that that is cross, everybody's clearly cited on that. And that's why it's really been able to be cross-party, cross-city organisations as well. How we work with partners, and that's how we've done it with the Ukraine crisis, that we've been able to have cross-party across with that, and with cross-organisations. So we are fully up to date, that when we didn't bring refugees here, that we'd got school places for them, that we've got services within the medical, the health, et cetera, across that. So that is just to make sure that nothing falls through them gaps. James, you just want to add to that?
Yeah, thanks, Chair. Just to be really clear as well, we are not suggesting that we are dealing with this as a formal kind of major incident, which is a, which is something that's actually defined legally through the Civil Contingencies Act. So if we were dealing with a major flood or something, that would be a major incident, and there is a process to declare that. This is about using some of the tools, techniques, ways of working that we kind of developed through the pandemic, and applying them in a slightly different way. Because we've come to, we came to a view that actually that might help to do exactly what councillor Fox just described, in terms of being able to coordinate and make sure that we were working in a cross-council, cross-city way to address holistically the challenges that the cost of living is bringing up, rather than it being a formal, new or kind of alongside formal governance system. It's not that. It's about advising and coming back, as Terry says, to this committee where we would make formal decisions, or indeed the specific policy committees, if that were required.
Thanks, Angela. We've got Martin then, Joe. Martin?
Thanks, Chair. Just a couple of really quick things. Firstly, I don't mind what we call the group, so long as we end up helping people. That's what it's all about. Just one fanatic thing, James. In your report, at one point, it talks about the chairs of committees being on the gold group, and then elsewhere it says to select a member. I'm prepared to do my bit, but I'm just thinking of, a particular committee member may have the skills and life experience to do a better job than me. So I'm just, what's the rules of the game here, please, basically?
Thanks, Martin. James?
Yeah, thanks, Martin. Proofreading error there, I think. So apologies for that. I think our intention had been that the committees might want to nominate somebody. But I'm conscious as well that we need to make sure that this is done on a cross-party basis, given the makeup of the council at the moment. So there probably needs to be a bit of coordination in the background, just to make sure that we end up with a balanced set of people. But I don't think, Chair, that necessarily there's an intention that it has to be the chairs of the committees, although they might be the right people in some instances.
No, good point. But Martin, about some members on committees will have certain skill sets that would be valued on that. So proofreading error. I'll leave that with officers, but anyway, thank you for raising that. Joe?
Thanks. Yes, I mean, on that point, I think I'm sure the whip's happy to be mucking with any coordination that he's doing, to make sure it's a cross-party group. I don't, yeah. But we'll find a way to do that. Yeah, obviously, I welcome this report, this initiative. It is, you know, it may not be the top issue facing the institution of the council, but it's certainly the top issue facing the people of Sheffield. And it's going to, you know, it has all sorts of causes, and it's going to have all sorts of effects. Some of those to do with government failure, and some of those external. But I just wanted to, following on from the previous discussion, the main thing I wanted to say was, yes, home insulation, I think we all want to go further and faster with that. I'm not sure what the situation is still with communal boilers, because we have a number of communal boilers on the network. Is everybody on a communal boiler? Do they all have their heat metered yet? Or are there still unmetred communal boilers in place? Because if somebody is desperately trying to save energy and wants to turn the heating down, if they're not metered, they can't do it. Their bill is determined by the usage of other people. So I don't know quite how far we've got with that. So if people are more up to speed with the communal boiler situation than me, thick and check. Because, you know, we could possibly be through the communal boiler scheme, which was well-intended, but it's probably, you know, not how we do things now, in danger of driving people into extreme hardship. Thanks.
Thanks, George. James?
I'm afraid I don't know the answer on the specific question, but I'll certainly undertake to find out and get back to you. And I'm sure we can consider that as part of the discussions on this.
Thanks, James. I think that's one of the points, having that committee, being able to explore those, and having everybody from that pulling that together. Sorry, Richard, did you just indicate? Richard?
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, just following on from Mick Rooney's discussions about insulation. We're currently going through a new local plan. Wouldn't it be nice if we could include in the local plan some higher standards on home insulation for new builds? So that actually we can say that Sheffield has the most insulated properties in the country. Is that possible?
Thanks for that, Richard. And I wanted to do a Richard Whitley and link that into the next part, but we'll take that in the next report as well, if that's okay. Thanks. Okay, if there's no more questions, comments, we've got recommendations. Can we agree those recommendations? Agreed. Thank you. And with Richard's help, we're significantly moving us on to item 11 with the governance arrangements of the local plan. Okay, thank you. Um, okay, thank you. Sorry, Simon, if, if you can just introduce yourself as well.
Thanks, Chair, yeah, I'm Simon Vincent, I'm the Strategic Planning Service Manager in the Planning Service. Um, so I'm just here to very briefly introduce this item, um, which is about the, uh, governance arrangements for the local plan going forward. Um, we've had a, um, a ve- a very effective, um, cross-party engagement process, uh, re-running since October last year. And really this report is about, um, trying to continue that, that process through the, the re-establishment of, of a, of the working group that will feed, then feed into the, uh, Transport, Regeneration and Climate Committee. Um, but it, because of the cross-cutting nature of the local plan, we feel it's important that this committee also has a role, uh, in approving the local plan when it, when it eventually comes, uh, forward, uh, later this year. The local plan itself will need to be, um, formally, um, uh, the draft plan will need to be formally signed off, um, by the full council, um, which we, we anticipate, anticipate being, um, probably the No- November committee, full council committee, um, uh, later this year. So I think, um, I'm not, won't tell much more in terms of, uh, in, by way of introduction, but I think it, I think the, the report's quite self-explanatory and it is just clarifying the reporting arrangements, um, for, on the local plan, uh, going forward, thank you, Chair.
Thank, thank, thanks, Simon. Uh, any questions, comments, I think we've all agreed that this cross-party. Um, also we've got a, a question from Richard about the insulation in, in, in the, uh, local plan and, uh, the, the build of, of houses. So I'll take Martin, but in the answer to Martin, can you kind of, Simon, just answer Richard's point, Martin?
Yeah, I was, uh, just trying to be helpful, I'm, I've, I think I'm the only member here who's been a member of that working group that Simon was talking about. Um, we've made really good progress, but, um, the, the, as the report says, I, I know from personal experience, the workload of that working group, particularly over the summer period, has got to be intense if we're going to hit the time scales that we've got. Um, so I know it's a pedantic point, but in the report it talks about, uh, cross-party, two members of each. Um, because workloads, but it's intense over the holiday period, I would suggest two members and a substitute. Uh, otherwise I can see things dragging, just to be helpful, Chair.
Simon?
Yeah, I've got absolutely no problem with, with, with a substitute, I think that makes, that would make sense, um, and provided other members are happy with that. I think that, that's, that would be a sensible way forward. In terms of the question about, um, building insulation, yes, absolutely, the new local plan will in, will, will include significantly better standards than we have now. And we're, the intention is to, um, adopt the REBA, um, twenty thirty standard, um, incorporate that into the, into the local plan. Um, but really make it, introduce it in a way that, that means that all development that comes forward from twenty twenty-seven onwards, any permissions that, that are granted from then, from that point onwards would need to meet the new, um, would need, need to meet the, the national, the standards set by the, uh, Royal Institute of British Architects. So those standards are effectively taking us to a net zero position by, by twenty thirty. The one caveat to that is we do have to check that, that the, the suite of policies in the local plan as a whole, um, don't make development unviable. So we do have to do a whole plan viability appraisal to check that the policies as a, as a whole, um, do, do operate in a way which allows development to come forward. But that, that's our intention to go as far and as quickly as we can on those standards, including around insulation, yeah.
Thanks, Simon, thanks, thanks, everyone. Oh, I've got recommendations and the amendments of, or sorry, Douglas?
Uh, just a quick one, I completely agree with the need for continuity. Um, it's a practical thing, if one says about the, the working group, does that need, um, endorsing at full council tomorrow? I'm just thinking if the opportunity, so you don't have further delay, do we need to get names together like tonight?
That, that, thanks, Douglas, it's here, the, the agreement stops with us as the S and R committee. So if we can agree that today with the amendments of Martin, put in a sub as well to that, okay? Thanks, can we agree that, okay? Thank you, thanks, thanks, Simon, and thank everyone for today's meeting, that's the end of the agenda. And look forward to, uh, reports back from your own committees, thank you.